The, uh, P- Pledge of Legits. Mr. Councilman Crabtree, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which the nation, the God, indivis- Justice, for all.
Thanks, Danny, for a moment of silent meditation or prayer. Thank you. Please remember to, uh, turn your cellphones on vibrate or on silent mode, please. Would you do a roll call? Angie?
Councilman Holtz.
Present.
Councilman Curry.
Here.
Councilwoman King.
Here.
Councilman Mishler.
Present.
Councilman Fish.
Here.
Councilwoman Hines.
Here.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky.
Present.
President Dawson.
Present. This time we have a presentation from the mayor. Good evening, council.
Evening.
Um, we have a tribute this, this, uh, this evening, um, uh, to, uh, some, uh, wonderful athletes, uh, from Steve's Gym. Um, hey. Hey, and they are here today. Absolutely. Okay, I am, uh, uh, I'm gonna read an acknowledgement and then we're going to talk a little bit about, um, not long, uh, their achievements at the Hoosier, Hoosier State Championship, um, or Hoosier State Championships, uh, for Taekwondo this, this past, uh, season, regular season, and I guess some tournaments as well, correct, Steve? All right, great, I wanna make sure I get it right. And you gave me a list of names that I'm not quite sure if I could pronounce them all, so if I don't do justice to your name, please don't blame it on my head, not my heart, okay? Okay, so with that said, let me, um, let me read the certificate of recognition, uh, for their achievements. City of Elkhart Certificate of Recognition, Steve's Gym Championship 2025 Season. Whereas Steve's Gym in Elkhart's hometown gym specializing in the training of Taekwondo and Hap Kito for students of all ages, and whereas the Elkhart Martial Arts Championship Team won a combined sixty-five state championships across Michigan, Indiana, Illinois, and Ohio. And whereas all four women competitors, Amelia, Amelia Wright, Elizabeth Herbin, Sam Lee, and Molly Herbin won gold medals in Indiana State Championship in point sparring. Whereas athletes Delilah Wright, Amelia Wright, Jessica Brigham, Brigham, and Walter Brigham attended the AAU National Championships in Salt Lake City, Utah. And whereas both Amelia Wright and Jessica Brigham, is it Brigham? All right, all right, great. Brigham earned silver medals, finishing in second place in point sparring and continuous sparring respectively. And whereas Delilah Wright earned a bronze medal in Olympic sparring and a gold medal national championship in po- in point sparring. And whereas Walker Brigham earned silver medals in both continuous sparring and traditional weapons, and Walter Brigham earned two gold medal national championships in speedboard breaking and creative weapons. And whereas the state and national success of the athletes at Steve's Gym illustrates the high caliber training and instruction that is present within our community. And whereas the city of Elkhart recognized athletes Cameron Kincaid, Joseph Davis, Delilah Wright, Amelia Wright, Jessica Brigham, Gerard Brigham, Elizabeth Herbin, Zachary Herbin, Samantha Lee, Dalton Cla- Clausen, Nagor Eaton, Chan, Chan Eaton, Walter Brigham, Molly Herbin, Charlie Lee, Amelia, thank you, Charlie Lee, for that name, I appreciate it. Anna Zubek? There's a D in front of that, you know that, don't you? Zubek, Jan Zubek, Lily Kinsell, Courtney Whitmer, and Lucas Whitmer, along with their coaches, Lauren Smith, Chenol Kim, Del- Delilah Wright, Gerard Brigham, Randy Herbin, and Sandy Brigham, for their stellar 2025 season. And now, therefore, I, Rod Robertson, Mayor of Elkhart, present the Certificate of Recognition to the, to the 2025 Elkhart Martial Arts Competition Team at Steve's Gym. The city of Elkhart is in awe of your accomplishments. In witness thereof, I have hereto set my name and cause the seal of the city of Elkhart to be affixed to this the eighteenth day of August, 2025. Rod Robertson, Mayor. Jeez. And, and would each of you, uh, please, and Steve, um, I think you could capture, uh, their success more so than I, and would you, young ladies and men, would you please step in front, uh, so that we can get you a picture with the city council as well as, uh, with me as well? All the way up here, come on, up here. All right. Hey, Neil. I thought, uh, Steve, is there something that you'd like to add to what I said earlier?
Well, I thank all of you for recognizing their accomplishment. It, they've come a long way to get here. Um, they had to compete in Utah last year, it was Fort Lauderdale. And it takes a lot of money, it takes a lot of effort from everybody in the city that helped us and support us. I, I started Udo nineteen seventy at the YMCA under Charlie Hooks. And in seventy-two, some of you may remember it, there was a martial arts studio above the Myers Men store. I went there, took Japanese martial arts, and then seventy-three, I started at one fifteen North Main Street. I did, uh, Korean martial arts, that's what I continue to do. I also was fortunate enough to buy that studio in seventy-eight. I taught for sixteen years at Notre Dame University, a club and program there, had many black belts. Um, I didn't have a lot of money when I was young, my parents didn't. The, the opportunities were given to me through sponsorships and people helping me out, just like help these kids. And I was fortunate enough to travel the United States, plus Europe. I've been overseas, Japan, Hong Kong, competed, and at about twenty-nine years old, my mom asked me if I was ever gonna get a job. So I thought that was a job, you know, but, uh, I spent probably about thirty thousand of all my money with sponsors, uh, going to tournaments. And then I ended up getting a blessed career on Elkhart City Police Department, which was nice, 'cause I got to teach defensive tactics, I think they call it physical tactics now. Whatever it was, I've taught, I've taught Secret Service, CIA, Homeland Security people, all, all forms in the military, ROTC programs, I've been very fortunate. Um, but these kids have all really done well, and I'm proud of all of them. And I'm proud of all of our sponsors. And I'm proud of all of our sponsors and our coaches. I was gonna have him say something, but we're gonna wrap it up so that this isn't gonna be so long, I could talk forever on this, okay? But what we did this year was, we wanted to think about all of our sponsors that helped us, and we wanted to think of how we could pay the city back, because the city has supported me for 52 years in the city, which is hard for any business, let alone a martial arts studio. I remember going to the bank and trying to get my first loan, and they go, "What's martial arts?" You know, and I couldn't get it, my mom had to loan me money so I could get the studio, but nonetheless, it happened. So what, we came together as a team, and these are official medals, we're going to award each and every one of you today, and along with the mayor, I'll award his first. It's an official AAU Gold National Medal. It's honorary, you know, we want to thank you for your support as being, you know, our councilman and mayor of Elkhart and all the people around support us, so you guys didn't have to do all the work there, but you do all the work every day for the city. So our students, each one of them have a medal for you. I have the mayor, we would like to award you with the official AAU Gold Medal.
I don't think I would've gotten these any other way.
And all of yours are, okay, you guys hand them out to whoever councilman you got.
And while they're, while they're giving the council their medals, I'd also would like to thank the parents that are in the audience, because I know their commitment is your commitment. And so as you've committed to them, we want to make sure that we let you know that we acknowledge you and your commitment to them as well. Thank you.
All right.
I have to bring our, our.
Put it in your mouth, please.
All right, one, two, three, I'm gonna take a cycle.
You came up just in time.
All right, watch this stuff, guys. leave, feel free to leave, so we're gonna take a five-minute recess.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, there's one more.
All right, I'm sorry, before the recess.
All right, so all of these athletes are phenomenal. And this is Delilah Wright. We, all of the athletes are phenomenal, she has a special dream. She wants to make the 2028 Olympics out in LA. And so she's struggling to get to that point. She's 15-years-old right now, she'll turn 16 in November, so she'll be at a great age for that, she's one of our first-degree black belts, she is an amazing young woman, and we're supporting her in every way that we possibly can. So just to let you know, we have a 501(c)(3), the Pilsen Foundation, and we're trying to raise money for them. I'm not looking for money from you. What I've got is I've got a statement of support, that's what it is, statement of support. If I could get, Mayor, if you could, I've got one for you as well, and if I could get the council to sign their letter, that would be fantastic. Delilah, why don't you say something?
If you would give that letter to the council secretary?
Oh, sure.
To make sure we get copies of it.
Hi, my name is Delilah Wright, and I have been doing Taekwondo for the last four and a half years of my life. I remember when I started, I was 11, and it was really just something that my friends were in, so I was like, "Oh, this seems cool." And then it really just grew from there. I didn't expect to love it as much as I do, and then every year, I've just gotten so much more confident and stronger, and just, my favorite thing to do is sparring, especially, specifically Olympic sparring, and it just brings me so much joy to be able to compete in all of those aspects. I've done forms before, and all sorts of different sparring, and yeah, so, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, appreciate you.
We weren't looking for it, but we got a donation for her.
Motion by Mr. Fish, second by Mr. Crabtree, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Could I get a motion for a minutes of July 30, 2025 city council meeting and plan commission meeting?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fish.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Hines. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. Can I get minutes, motion for approval of minutes for August 4, 2025 council meeting?
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Crabtree, second by Mr. Fish. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of August 8, 2025 Finance Committee of the Whole?
So moved.
Got motion by Mr. Fish, second by Mrs. Hines. The motion to approve, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. There are no reports from-
React fast enough, July 28, 2025, second page, page two actually, primary paragraph, three-quarter of the way down, it says it was 50, last year appropriated, which will be asked to be appropriated, there was 50,000 appropriated.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Unfinished business, there are no reports from council, council committees, orders on second reading. Angie, would you read, proposed orders 25-0-25?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-25, an ordinance enacting and adopting the 25th supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the city of Elkhart, Indiana.
I get a motion, second, adopt this ordinance, motion by Mr. Crabtree, second by Mr. Fish, council discussion. Seeing none, I'll open up to the public, public hearing, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak with regards to this ordinance? Seeing none, bring it back to the council, any council discussion? Seeing none, Angie, would you do a roll call vote on second reading, please?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Got a motion from Mr. Mishler, second from Mr. Crabtree, for third and final.
Would the clerk please read the ordinance by title only and take a roll call vote on adoption?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-25, an ordinance enacting and adopting the 25th supplement to the Code of Ordinances for the city of Elkhart, Indiana, Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Would you read, proposed ordinance 25-0-26 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-26, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition, construction, and installation of certain improvements of the sewage works of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, the issuance of additional revenue bonds in one or more series to finance the costs thereof, the collection, segregation, and distribution of revenues of such sewage works, sewage work, the safeguarding of the interest of the owners of such revenue bonds, and other matters connected therewith, including the issuance of notes in anticipation of such bonds and all matters related thereto.
Thank you. Can I get a motion, the second, to adopt this ordinance on second reading?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Fish, second by Mr. Crabtree, council discussion. Mr. Irwin.
Good evening, council. So we are here tonight asking for approval for the utilities to bond the remaining two projects known as the Oakland Tank Projects.
Tori, could you kind of introduce yourself?
Oh, sorry, Tori Irwin, Public Works Director. We are, it's the two Oakland C and Oakland D phases, it will connect the tank that is under construction right now at Indiana and Oakland, all the way down Harrison, up Third Street to Jackson Street, over to Waterfall, where we built a tank nine years ago.
Questions for Tori. Mr. Fish.
So, Tori, how long does this bond last?
This will be a 20-year bond through the Indiana Finance Authority. Thank you.
Mr. Inkey.
Just to be clear about this, Tori, what size bond is this?
So the sewer bond is 41,870,000, it's a not-to-exceed amount. We will actually get bids back at the end of next month, and the bond will be sized under that amount when we know the final bid amounts.
We don't know the cost of issuance at this point?
We do not know.
Okay, and then do we have any other bonds retiring in the next five years?
Yes, so our original bonds from 2008 for the original High Dive tank are, I believe, are set to sunset in the next five years or so, they were not very much.
Wondered what our annual cost to manage those comparison to what we're taking on, and then our bond load commensurate to what we know about SB1 and its impact. So this is gonna be paid predominantly by what fee?
These bonds are already built into the sewer rates and the water rates that the utility users pay for.
That we have voted on the three-year increments and no more after that is expected, right, for the next, to cover these bonds, I should say?
The sewer rates, I believe, were a five-year rate, and I think it is through 2028, and the water rates were a three-year rate, starting this year and ending in 2028 as well, I believe, so.
The length of service for these bonds?
20 years.
20?
Yep.
Thank you.
All of the, all of bonds through IFA for the utility uses 20 years.
Thank you, any more questions for Tori? Thank you, Tori. This time I'll open up to the public, is there anyone in the public who would like to speak with regards to this ordinance?
Good evening, council, my name is Michelle Corich, and I come before you today to remind you that bonds over $4 million can be remonstrated. I, I find this baffling, every time I come before you, your fiscal, your job is fiscal oversight. That is your job. Why is it that you don't know these things? This has been going on forever, forever, and it's, it's just ad nauseam to me. You know, we have, I came here last time and told you about the median income, you've already raised the water rates. When I went to the district council Tuesday talk, nobody wanted to answer that question for the senior citizens that lived in the Park Place Boardwalk community. The mayor's team didn't even want to take my question, because that was my question. I had to ask my councilman when it was his time. So I look at this, and I look at our median income, and he just said that those rates are only good for five and three years. So in 2028, what do you do? Because SB1 is not gonna change in 2028, but you're still gonna have the cost. And I've been around a lot longer than most of the people in this room, and I know what's gonna happen. Because the mayor even said it, after he had all of the other mayors here, there's gonna be fees that are gonna be added, and costs are going to be placed on the taxpayers. A municipal bond is a tax, it is a debt you are supposed to take out on behalf of your community that they can afford. We can't afford this. You don't know what you don't know. You don't know what it's gonna cost. Let me tell you what happened the last time you had bonds. The bonds came out at $41 million, and what was left was used by the Water and Sewer Department to fix other things without your approval. They just used the leftover money. Is that gonna happen? Are they gonna use the leftover money, Mr. Hanky? I seem to recall they bonded and then they used the $8 million that was left over to put lids on the stinky tanks. Is that gonna happen? You don't know. Do you remember that, Mr. Curry? You didn't approve that, and the citizens are still paying for it. I think you need to reconsider some of these projects as you move forward. as you move forward, knowing full well the effect of the SEA one bill. Because we're going to get hurt. We're going to get hurt a lot. And if you want to be like Baltimore and New York and Illinois, Chicago, Illinois, do you want to end up billions of dollars in debt? You need to consider these things. I would actually suggest that you table this until you have more numbers. And I think you should do that on behalf of your constituents, not that you care.
Thank you very much. Any other discussion? No. All right, bring it back to the council, council discussion. Mr. Mishler.
Tori, quick question. This project is federally mandated.
That's correct.
Okay, and if we do not complete this project, the city would be subject to extensive fines from the federal government?
Daily.
Correct. Daily?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Hinky.
Disagree at all with Ms. Corich. This particular one, however, and the one following, is the completion of something that has occurred since 2001, 2002, somewhere in there, a federal mandate unfunded, and we were stuck with. Could we have done a better job managing money? Yes. I think that's the obvious answer. And looking at SB one, I'm sure now there's people in the room wishing we would have looked more closely at projects. This one, however, is not one of those that we're going to be allowed to based on the time element involved, based on, I mean, I'd hope that rates would come down for us, but I do think we're getting the best rate we can at this moment. It doesn't stop this project at all. I would hope, though, that, again, any other bond, any other large expenditure coming down the line would be really scrutinized as to our affordability, especially beginning the year 2028. This one has to move forward. It has a cost, it's an ugly cost, but it is what it is. It's pretty well set in stone for us by the federal government, and we probably could have offset it by ten, twenty million dollars, quite honestly. But putting these two together, they have to be passed. So, I would just say we need to be more frugal as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Tori. Turn it back to the council. Should do a roll call vote, please.
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Got a motion for Mr. Mishler, second for Mr. Fish, for third and final. Angie, would you read it by title and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-26, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition, construction, and installation of certain improvements to the sewage works of the city of Elkhart, Indiana, the issuance of additional revenue bonds in one or more series to finance the cost thereof, the collection, segregation, and distribution of revenues of such sewage work, the safeguarding of the interest of the owners of such revenue bonds, and other matters connected therewith, including the issuance of notes in anticipation of such bonds and all matters related thereto. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Would you read proposed orders 25-0-27 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-27, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition, construction, and installation by the city of Elkhart, Indiana, of certain improvements and extensions to the city's water works, the issuance and sale of revenue bonds to provide funds for the payment of such costs thereof, the collection, segregation, and distribution of revenues of such water works and other related matters, and other matters connected therewith, including the issuance of notes in anticipation of such bonds.
So moved.
Crabtree.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mishler. Adoption on second reading. Tori.
So this is just the water side of the project. The IURC will not allow us to use sewer money to pay for water infrastructure, so we are using water rates to pay for this water infrastructure. It will replace the roughly one-hundred-year-old water main that is throughout the project. It will replace lead lines, which is also mandated by the EPA and the federal government unfunded. And it will extend water down Third Street so that when that area redevelops, we will have the utility infrastructure underneath Third Street to accommodate development.
Thank you. Questions? Mr. Hinky.
Tori, what size of bond? Is this one?
Size, eight-point-two million, up to, not to exceed.
Eight-point-two? And it's a twenty-year as well?
It is also a twenty-year, yes.
And on this side, water service, do we have any retiring bonds?
We actually have no bonds on the water side now. IURC, when we went through the rate case, they have mandated that we go into debt and use bonds to fund capital investment.
You're comfortable that the rates that are already in place are servicing both bonds?
Yes, and we will have to, when the bonds finalize, we will have to do a true-up with IURC and true-up the rates through the council and the IURC at that point.
And then, to the point of leftover funds, funds that are not utilized, how would the council become aware of those funds?
So funds that are not utilized, they are then, we ask the IURC as the next project in the Long Term Control Plan comes, we request from the IURC that any extra that might have been left in the bonds be rolled over and applied to the next project in the Long Term Control Plan when we get that project bonded through the IFA, so that that money, IURC does not allow us to just return the funds. They prefer that we reinvest it in the other projects that we are going to have.
So, and these fifty million dollars, and what part of completion are we to the total project?
So, in terms of the Long Term Control Plan, we are, as of this date, before these bids go out, we have spent or currently have under contract a hundred and thirty-three million dollars in project costs. These two projects are the largest investments in the Long Term Control Plan. This Oakland as a whole is the largest project that the Long Term Control Plan had in it. There are two significant projects still remaining. There is another smaller tank in the Riverside area, and then another major separation, sewer separation project in the Willowdale neighborhood, as well as a smaller separation in the Beardsley and Greenleaf area, and then some very, very smaller jobs to finish out the Long Term Control Plan.
So in transparency's sake, what you're saying is there will be future bonds?
Yes, and the rates that we established, we intend to fund the remainder of the Long Term Control Plan.
With the current rates established?
With the rates that were passed by the council two years ago. That was the intent, so.
Thank you. Mr. Mishler.
And what is the, the end date, final, for completion of these projects?
December 31st, 2029, but we have applied with the EPA for the five-year extension that we are allowed to apply for. They have not given us an answer, so we are pushing to make that end date 2034 so that some more of the bonds can drop off and that we have the ability to fund all of the projects.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Tori. This time I'll open it up to the public, is there anyone in the public that would like to speak with regards to this?
Michelle Corich. So, I just heard something. They are asking for an extension. They're asking for an extension. So that means your feet are not on the fire right now. He just said that. I asked that question. I understand what a federally mandated nightmare this has been. He's asking for an extension. He just told you he's going to get, he's going to push for five more years. Again, remember that bonds can be remonstrated that are over four million dollars. There are more than fifteen percent of the people in this community that elected all of you. Just keep that in mind. Because remonstration has succeeded in the past. I don't think that it would be difficult to do it again, considering you're going to tax the people some more.
Thank you. Is anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Seeing none, turn it back to the council. Any more council discussion? Mr. Hinky.
I, I agree that remonstrance is a legal action from the community, and, and, you know, I've used it before in the past myself and have been a part of several. On this particular one, I think several things are at play. We do have Senate Bill One, and the city will take its biggest hit on the, on 2028 revenue. That's what we do know. I think the extension not necessarily was for the project itself, even though Elkhart is spending over two-hundred-and-fifty million. That was mandated but not funded. It's a matter that in coinciding with SB one puts us at real risk, puts every city at real risk in the state of Indiana. And that's going to be the biggest of problems. I think what it's going to do, according to speaking with Tori, is just allow the funding to be mechanized to the point that we can refund our own self as opposed to increasing rates at that time because they overlap each other. That was the goal. I fully support that goal, to minimize the debt to the public and the obligation to pay yet another user fee. I agree, if we can push it out and pay off some bonds before we actually initiate new bonds, that's in the best interest of our community. Hopefully, that's where we go.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none? Angie.
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Aye.
Third and final.
I've got a motion for Mr. Crabtree.
Second.
Second for Mr. Fish, for third and final. Angie, would you do, read it by title and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-27, an ordinance authorizing the acquisition, construction, and installation by the city of Elkhart, Indiana, of certain improvements and extensions to the city's water works, the issuance and sale of revenue bonds to provide funds for the payment of the cost thereof, the collection, segregation, and distribution of revenues of such water works and other related matters, and other matters connected therewith, including the issuance of notes in anticipation of such bonds. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. There are no ordinances or resolutions, refer to committee. Tabled orders, resolution, would you read proposed ordinance 25-0-24 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-24, an ordinance appropriating three-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty dollars and ten cents from the Cumulative Fire Equipment and Police Fund to pay the balance on the lease purchase agreement for the, for the Rescue One apparatus of the Elkhart Fire Department.
Got a motion and a second to remove this from the table?
So moved.
Got a motion for Mr. Hanky, I mean, Mr. Crabtree, second for Mr. Mishler. Should do a roll call vote on that?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilwoman, or Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky. President Dawson.
Aye.
All right, so we're going to rule from the table. I'll open it up for council discussion. Pass it on first reading. Table. Got a get a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading? Motion by Mr. Mishler, second by Mr. Hanky, that we adopt this on second reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Have anyone from fire, or is this something? What are we doing?
We are seeking to close the deal on our, I'm sorry, Rodney Dale, chief of the Elkhart City Fire Department, and we are seeking to close the deal on the sale of our heavy rescue balance from the lease, three-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand dollars, eight-hundred, three-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty dollars and ten cent.
Questions? Mr. Hinky.
This is the final balance. What was the total cost when you consider the lease option?
The total cost was a little over seven-hundred thousand dollars. We sold the apparatus for eight-hundred-and-fifty-five. We still owed the three-sixty-four for two, it was two lease payments left on.
And then, do you know what's left in the cum fire?
I do not know the...
At the end of this expenditure?
That exact figure, I do not.
And then, what are your other apparatus needs in the next three years?
The, the most immediate need will be another ladder truck to cover that northeast district that we've just acquired.
Part of new station six?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for chief? Thank you, chief.
You're welcome.
Seeing none, I'll open up to the public, is there anyone in the public who would like to speak with regards to this ordinance? Seeing none? Angie?
Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Got a motion for Mr. Hanky and a second for Mr. Crabtree, for third and final. Angie, would you read it by title and do a roll call vote, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-24, an ordinance appropriating three-hundred-and-sixty-four thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty dollars and ten cents from the Cumulative Fire Equipment and Police Fund to pay the balance on the lease purchase agreement for the Rescue One apparatus of the Elkhart Fire Department. Councilman Holtz.
Aye.
Councilman Curry.
Yes.
Councilwoman King.
Yes.
Councilman Mishler.
Aye.
Councilman Fish.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hines.
Yes.
Councilman Crabtree.
Yes.
Councilman Hanky.
Aye.
President Dawson.
Aye.
Passes nine to zero.
Thank you. New business, ordinance on first reading. Would you read proposed ordinance 25-0-28 by title, please?
Proposed ordinance 25-0-28, an ordinance authorizing the city of Elkhart to fund its taxable economic development revenue notes, Series 2025, and approving and authorizing other actions in respect thereto. And Approving and Authorizing Other Actions in Respect There Too.
All right. Can I get a motion to table this ordinance until our, for second and third reading for our September 15th meeting? Got a, got a motion for Mr. Fish, second for Mr. Hinky to table. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. There are no resolutions. There are no vacation hearings. Uh, other new business? Is there other new business? Mr. Hinky?
So, um, I did miss a meeting and that was the special meeting in regards to planning redevelopment and, um, wanted to go over a couple of things. In fact, Eric, I don't see him tonight, but he did offer time and, um, the video, um, audio from this meeting. And my concern with it is this. Um, even though it sounds great, especially for low-income families and trying to downsize properties, um, it is actually contrary to Senate Bill 1 in regards to, basically, while attempting to assist with affordable housing, the, the indirect effect is going to be the lowering of average AV throughout our community. And that's just reality. And that is future revenues that we are gonna be pushing against. And so I would just ask us to be mindful that every time we downsize, every time we minimize, it will have its effect both in AV and in lit, which directly affects future income. Our department, thank you for the ambulance rate updates. That was fine. Um, there is another one and that came out with Board of Works. I know a couple of you also, um, had phone calls from people, companies, trying to upgrade their interceptor systems to monitor, their waste going into the sewer systems. And for some of these folks, um, it's been an ongoing and expensive process. I think I was told today that companies have put out $3.2 million already in an attempt to come into, um, compliance. And I think compliance is a necessary thing. That's, that's part of the package. However, um, there is now a $250 a day fine that has come through in letter format. And what I'm asking for, um, because I know two companies that spoke with me today just said they're at the mercy of contractors to finish or complete the projects and they would be in compliance. And you probably know as much about the story as I do on a couple of those. So what I'm asking is that through the administration, you would consider a pause or grace period for 60 days of completion. If completion is not done by ordinance, um, then all the fines starting June 1st will be in full effect. But I think we would all, rather than be in compliance and spend the money towards compliance as it is having a daily rate to pay out and they're still waiting on contractors. One is waiting on a contractor that cannot make it back to their company till the 28th of this month. So they'll be paying out a few thousand dollars while they wait. And another one also said they're just having problems with a contractor. So I don't know the rest of the stories. Um, that's those pieces. I don't know if this had any effect on Elkhart products having closed their doors. But I would ask that there would be consideration. And if we can say that we can pause the fines for 60 days and if they do not meet the standard, then all the fines go back into place from day one. So I would just ask for that consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other new business? Mr. Curry?
Yes, Mr. President. I'd just like to say that the Baker Tilly presentation I thought was very good and very helpful to kind of get us prepared for what might happen. But I still have that question I had that night, that, that second pot of money that the state is holding hostage, unless we do a new city wheel tax, we can't get part of that money. I just think it's not the right thing to do to the people. And they're kind of forcing our hand that if we want part of that money, which he wasn't able to tell me where it came from, but I'm almost sure it come from people's property taxes or some kind of tax that we, the people, pay and we should be able to get that money without taxing the people with a wheel tax.
Thank you. I, uh, had the privilege of attending a meeting with some county elected officials, city, county elected officials. Uh, the mayor and his staff were there also talking with the, the author of Senate Bill 1 and he's on the Ways and Means Committee. And, and Senate Bill 1 is far from over. I mean, in this meeting, you had people from the entire county, county commissioners, county council, town council people. Everybody was there and everybody was in one accord. It's like in unison. This is not good for us. Our state representatives were there. They heard this. And, uh, the county council did an excellent job of, of explaining to people how you, they say you're gonna get a $300 tax break, but you're actually not because we're gonna have to do this in order to recoup our income because the state is requiring us to do just what you're saying to get our money. So I don't believe that, that SB 1 is, is over. It's gonna be what, what it looks like. I think there're gonna be some amendments. I think, uh, the mayor and the chief of staff, uh, Megan, did an outstanding job of outlining what it meant to the cities. The, uh, county officials did the same thing. Each town, Goshen, Middlebury, Millisburg, we were all in one accord. And I mean, you, you couldn't tell what political party was in the room by the message that was being delivered by those that were in the room. So I felt like we were listened to by the people that came to, to, to meet with us in the Ways and Means and the author of the bill. Uh, and I'm, I'm thinking we need to continue to push, uh, our state officials to, to do something better. Steve Clark, one of the county councilmen, makes the statement that, you know, he's been cordial and quiet about it. But if that, something doesn't change, he's not gonna be cordial and quiet going forward because it's a burden to our taxpayers. You know, you gotta, like you said, we're gonna double tax. You know, if I pay a county tax and I live in a city, I'm gonna pay a county and a city wheel tax. So there's some things in that bill that I believe are gonna be changed and we're gonna have to be consistent with our message to the legislators, how it hurts us. Uh, we don't wanna impose fees on our citizens. Uh, we don't wanna start charging for garbage. We don't wanna do those things. And it's gonna be extremely difficult for us to continue to plan our projects going forward. If you, the legislators can't fully explain to us what this means financially. We're hoping to get some data. I think they said in six months that would, that might help make the picture more clear. But in unison, everybody was talking about, we gotta do our budgets. The county does a two-year budget. So, you know, they're thinking, what don't we do? You know, what, what fees do we start imposing? And if there's not a clear picture, nobody knows. And so we're gonna continue to work as a county, uh, to, to, to direct this thing. And I would encourage all of you, talk to our legislators too, because they were in the room and they heard it. I think the intentions, what they intended to do, they, they meant to, they, you know, was, was good intended, but there's a side effect, you know? And, and they didn't realize what that side effect will be. So let's continue to be diligent with, with, uh, talking to our legislators. Reports for the mayors, board of works, board of safety. Are we gonna do the?
President.
Yes.
I too was at the meeting, but I would be lying if I said I was in accord with everybody else. I think it just comes at a very fast rate, but I know what the state is intending to do. We're just gonna have to look very closely at our core services. And I know, uh, Megan did a nice job, um, looking at the city's position and saying it. But I think every city and town out there is gonna be going through the same process. And we can't just keep taking money from the same people. We're gonna have to own up and we'll do our best.
All right. Megan Irwin, Chief of Staff. Um, I'd like to provide an update on the rental inspection program today. Uh, so as you know, we passed a rental inspection and registration ordinance several months back and, uh, have successfully begun that process. Uh, I, I just want to highlight, um, all the hard work that our building and code and permits team did to get us to the point where we are ready to launch the, um, registration portal online. And, um, as of June 30th, we did hire a new inspector to do the rental inspections. His name is Neil Culber. Neil, I'm gonna stand just for a second so folks get to see your face. Uh, Neil has an incredibly, um, incredibly rich background in home inspections. He's a licensed plumber, um, and he's, uh, great to just chat with. So I think he's gonna be a great representative of the city as he walks into these, um, homes and takes a look at, uh, safety issues that may need to be addressed by the landlord. Um, we have registered so far 69 properties since we opened up the registration portal, scheduled 102 inspections and completed 21 of them so far. So, so far, uh, so good. And, uh, we will continue to work and tweak as, uh, questions come in and continue to communicate to, uh, property owners.
Thank you, Megan. I'd also like to add on the new business that this is Angie's official, official last meeting, as she goes into the private sector, leaving us. But we wanna really thank you for your service and all you, you've done to help us be, and being my, my work wife for the last two years. I appreciate you keeping me aligned. So thank you and, and, and congratulations and good luck on your endeavors. Uh, neighborhood association reports. Mr. Curry?
Yeah, I'd like to report for the Pimran Neighborhood Association. And we will be having our annual neighborhood cleanup on Saturday, August the 23rd. We're gonna gather at 10 P, P, 10 a.m. And one of the major projects we wanna try to do is assist a family that bought a house over a year ago. And then the tornado hit and they still not in there. So we wanna do some cleanup around that property to try to help them get situated where they can finally move in.
Ms. King?
I'd like to thank, um, Sixth District. We had a, a cleanup on Union Street and Hester Saturday. And, uh, I want to thank David Ortega and Jose in that block area, um, right off of Franklin Street for wanting to host that and wanting to have a better place for their neighbors to walk and, uh, beautification in the area. Uh, and I also wanna thank Clayton, um, for volunteering also in addition with Faith Mission. And, um, thank you very much and I appreciate you.
Thank you. Mr. Hinky?
Eastlake, I'm just touching base for that board. And, um, I believe Eastlake is being invaded by cars trying to get around Bristol Street. Project wanting a timeline on that. So if we could be provided some form of timeline of how this traffic is gonna be diverted, it tends to be through our neighborhood. Now just give us some insight.
Thank you, Ms. Hinky. Any more neighborhood association reports? Privilege of the floor. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak on anything in regards to what's on our agenda tonight?
Good evening, councilman. My name's Michelle Corrige. And I couldn't help but notice a few things. One, Elkhart has spent eight to 10 million dollars on the North Point redesign. In the 33 years I've lived in this community, that's happened at least four times with similar millions of dollars. Two, spent $3 million for the Chase Bank Building. Plus, who knows how much it's gonna cost us to do the public safety? But let's just go with 9 million. The contract, three, contracted to receive the former Elkhart County Court Building across the street. The cost is going to be two to three million dollars for demo. Spent and committed $7 million to Tolson Center after giving the property to the Elkhart Community Foundation. By the way, none of these properties add to the tax base as they are all nonprofit or government-owned. As we head into this budget season, huge cuts are looming. Just remember, these Democrats don't just work for you. They work for ECS. Chad Crabtree.
Stop, right there. Stop, stop, stop.
Dwight Fish, Fourth District Councilman.
Stop, right there.
Tonda Hines.
I'm gonna ask you again to stop. I'm gonna have you removed.
Alex Holtz.
Would you please remove her?
Mr. Dawson. And the former mayor are all Elkhart Community Schools' former or current.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak with regards to what's on the agenda?
My name is Howard Turner. I was a little saddened that, uh, the Progress Fest a couple Saturdays ago only had two council members attend. Grateful for the two that did. Kind of disappointed in the one who was explicitly invited and was not able to make an appearance. Do you have a question? With the popularity of electric vehicles and hopefully the city getting to keep having the events that bring people from outside our community here, like the go-kart races, do we have any charging stations? I don't know where they are and I've lived here forever. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Spellberry?
Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Ralph Spellberry. I live on Bank Street, out on the east side of town. So I'm pleased to see that the railroad tracks where Division and Blazer Boulevard has been fixed. Secretary Buttigieg came here, I don't know, a year or two ago and, uh, they held a press conference. When he was the mayor of South Bend one time, uh, a subject came up and I thought one person out of eight on the council cast a common sense vote. Mayor Pete vetoed it. I met him later. I praised him. He thanked me and we went on our way. Uh, I wanna speak on this, uh, Senate Bill 1. Uh, it, it seems to me the state's trying to push things off onto cities rather than counties. Uh, city wheel taxes to me are a terrible idea. I think there are already, are county wheel taxes, the same thing in terms of income tax. It's my understanding that the county income taxes are gonna be eliminated. I think that's a terrible idea. Michigan has city income taxes. Battle Creek has a city tax. Kalamazoo does not. Detroit, as you would expect, has the highest rate in the state of Michigan.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience?
Jeff Savatsky, Director of the Elkhart Environmental Center. Uh, councilmembers, Mayor Robinson, I'd like to share with you an event, uh, this Saturday for your video, uh, pleasure. Uh, we had our 2025 River Cleanup through, um, Elkhart River. Um, Elkhart Environmental Center partnered with Parks and Rec, Public Works, our Aquatics Division. We had 26 volunteers, um, show up as well. And throughout the day, and that, that's the key photo. It's, it's toward the end of the day. We started at the environmental center. We put in about 8:30 and went downriver. Our first pullout of garbage was right at the Indiana Avenue Bridge. Second was at Studebaker Park. And then third, it was around the American Park. Our, our goal was to get to the railroad trestle behind York Woods. That boat couldn't make it. That bombed out. We had a, we had to shove it up. But you can see the dump truck in the back. We filled up two of those. Um, I'm waiting for the weights. We had, um, 30 tires that we, that we pulled, shopping carts, bicycles, barrels, and a lot of fun surprises that I can share with you after the meeting. But a, as frustrating as discouraging as it is to, to see that, that garbage and, and stuff pulled out, it's refreshing to have 26 volunteers show up and work with multiple departments in the city and staff members within the city to help show up to, um, to pull the, to pull this out. Yeah, we found the superintendent too in the river. He was part of the garbage pile. So it was a good event. It was, we had 12-year-olds, family, kayakers, canoes, and just a lot of stuff. So, um, hoping to get some weights, um, of the total amount, but 30 tires. And one was a tractor tire about yea high. So that's what we did last Saturday.
Thank you.
Excuse me, council. I apologize. This probably should have been a part of, uh, mayor department heads and the reporting there as opposed to privilege of the floor. So we'll get that right the next time.
That's okay. That's okay. Not a problem. Anyone else in the audience? Seeing none, we turn it back to council floor. How many entertaining motions you have?
Except for communications?
Except for communications?
So move.
We got motion for Mr. Crabtree, second for Mr. Fish. That we accept communications. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Ken? Got a motion to adjourn. Supposedly by Mr. Mishler.
Second.
Second by everybody. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.